Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's September thirteenth edition of the community of the whole community development meeting. We're in the council chambers in Spencerville, Ontario, and I'd like to follow this meeting order. First, I guess I'd need an approval of the agenda. Can I get a mover for the agenda? Counselor Martel, thank you, and seconded by by Mayor DeShaw. That's good. So any changes or anything we also make on the agenda? Very none, okay. All in favor? Excellent. Okay, moving on to three disclosure of peculiarity interest, conflict of interest or the general nature thereof. Does anyone have anyone to declare? No, sorry, no, and no one hearing none, that's good. I should actually add as well that Counselor Smale is is running late tonight. We're hoping he does make the meeting, but we'll see what happens. But for now, he's he's on a seat right now, but we're hoping to get him in. Just to that, to that point, do we have committee members?
We haven't heard from our advisory.
Okay, we have to two. Two committee was one, one, and. We so. Just.
Let me jump.
Nor like no. Okay, moving on. For then, business arising from previous committee minutes, if any, does anybody have any thing from the previous committee? None by me. Oh, you say something there, or no, sir? Okay, good. Moving on to number five, then delegations and presentations. We do not have any tonight. So we'll move on to number six, which is action information and discussion items. Six A, number one, is modernizing notice requirements for planning matters. CDC, perfect, okay?
Sure, this is going by fast, okay. And so some regulatory changes have been made through Bill one eighty-five, putting the tape to those more homes back. To provide municipalities with to provide notice which reflect the planning matters on municipal website if there's no local print newspaper available. So really summarize the planning act that tells us about how we can give notice. They give us three options for the manner of the notice to be given to the public by mail to every property owner within a hundred twenty meters of the subject land and by posting a sign clearly visible from the road. Or you can publish notice in a newspaper with sufficient general circulation to give the public reasonable notice of the meeting. Or the new option is if the Neotian or the Secretary of Defense newspaper described above does not exist, notice shall be given by posting a notice on the website of the municipality or planning board. So our current process for advertising public meetings, if it's zoning by law amendment, we publish the notice in the Rockville Burn Times and in Rockville Prescott this week newspaper. But second newspaper is an option that used to be available to us at no cost. We can now our charge for that. But hesitate to discontinue it if that's how we provided notice for in the past without more thoughtful consideration. And in addition, we mail notices to property owners within a hundred twenty meters of the subject land. We also share the meeting on our online council calendar. So with this process, we actually exceed the minimum requirements for providing notice. So we do, we need the requirements just by mailing out the notices, but then we also publish on the on the, no, sorry, we need those requirements just by publishing in the newspaper, but we also mail it out. Not everybody reads newspaper, and we also feed on our website. Staff have not found that many responses have cited the newspaper ad when commenting on an application. Mind you, we don't ask every single person who comments on an application how they found out about it. Sometimes they would say that they got a letter in the mail, or sometimes a friend told them, or sometimes they saw it on the on the website. Occasionally, they do see it in a newspaper also. Staff suggests that the best way to reach out to our diverse people residents is through a combination of print advertising on our website and with mailed notices. Where amendments are proposed that affect all properties in the township, like I was keeping in mind the process we're going through now, sure, newspaper advertising would be used instead of individual mailed notices. That's giving me reach. Everyone is mailing out individual notices. Is it a reasonable or feasible approach? Our project's notice policy says that where notice intention pass a bylaw or notice of the public meeting is required to be given in a newspaper by legislation. The first shall cause such notice to be published in newspaper. Where no notice is required by legislation, the first shall cause such notice to be published in newspapers where time permits and on municipal website. So the planning act doesn't require us to publish in the newspaper. So we're not going against our township's notice policy, but I did the suggestion to update it the next time we do this policy. So it could be amended to allow and not require notice to be published in newspaper where it's seen as to be appropriate. So that could be done at a future date. So as a recommend, as a recommendation, staff committee could, they are agreeable to this change, endorse the modernization of our notice to the public with respect to planning matters, which will generally include mailing notices and publishing on the township's website as required to meet or exceed regulations made.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Counselor Martel, do you have anything you want to comment on that?
I never should have said here. No, actually, this, you know, it fits very nicely into, we've got six E coming up here where we're talking about communications. Do we have any cost numbers on newspapers? How much we spent like say in the last X amount of time?
The chair, it varies a little bit, but it's generally between nine hundred and twelve hundred dollars, which is almost half of their application fees for going, because it's always that expensive, and especially now that we're paying for the second newspaper that we don't need. It seems kind of like an empty table. Thoughts to add to an application fee?
Do our ads that we put in the recorder in time, Prescott and Brockville this week, also go on their recording times website, Facebook page?
The chair, we don't have a commitment that that happens. We used to have a dedicated sales rep for these. They no longer have a dedicated sales rep for these. We have to deal with your like generic. Both they also weren't able to tell us what the circulation of each newspaper was if that were to be one over the other. I tried to make that call recently, say, let's just take with one to see across, but they couldn't give me information on what the circulation was the whole. There's overlap or one is more in our area than the other. And it was, it's difficult to get that information.
What, does that add also go on the website?
Don't know.
Don't know.
It's all I've got.
I'm still forward, I'm still with the paper. The only reason, like to see it in the pa- paper. And a letter within a hundred and twenty meters, I guess, is that right? There we can. That's very important. And I think just because the, I feel with the newspaper, it just gives us a little bit more transparent. And I can say to some while it was in the newspaper. The hundred and twenty, I like it. I don't think everybody, you know, mailing out mailing out invitations that we're having a public meeting on so and so when they're five miles away. They have no, it has no bearing on. I don't think. I mean, we got as we can see at one time here, four or five years ago, we got ourselves into something like that. So that being said, I think the hundred and twenty is good, and there's still like the website on our, on our Facebook website and the as far as invitations, no, that's a glad day. We could do that, so. Yeah, I'm fine with those two.
With those two, sorry, with those three.
With the, I want the newspaper and and the letter with a hundred and twenty meters. Okay, very, very important, hundred and twenty.
Yeah, I excuse my humor, but I think short of carrier pigeon, we should be, we should be making every effort to you know, to connect however, however it's needed, and certainly worth whatever the expenses. I mean, looking at stats can data, twenty four point four percent of our population, in other words, we're cardinal is sixty-five years and over. As a data guy, means you got to use every mean means possible. And if it's print, I think as long as print is still there, we need to support the locals and getting the news out. I had a good conversation with Ron Zajak today, actually, about about an announcement we had today. So, so the fact that that went through an email and it's going to end up in their newspaper is, you know, paramount to continuing to support our township. So making sure we get out the message regardless of however that is. I get it on Facebook. I get it through email. I get it through a lot of different ones, but I certainly buy the leader every week and I and I buy this at Crandall paper every week as well, or every two weeks, I guess. So, you know, I think any, any way we can support, any way we can get our message out is good. Not carry the pigeon.
Well, we never know. Fair enough. And so, I mean, and and I mean, I'll speak because, you know, we need an extra voice here, because we're telling us not here.
And you like to.
And I just, exactly. But, you know, I I sort of, you know, I I side with, you know, i- is print media still still relevant? I mean, and it's hard to say, but I I don't want to do less, you know, and if if there's another option out there, which is where I share Counselor Martel's sentiment comments about, you know, let's, let's, I would like to see what the discussion it looks like with regards to the communication committee that we're talking about. Later on, if we if we set that up, you know, is there other tools, you know, and and I mean, I think we've mentioned a few tools along the way, and maybe there's other things we can do to make sure that we get the word out to everybody who's, 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 everybody, pardon me, not just anybody, but everybody. So, you know, I said on the fence, because I don't really, because this cost is borne entirely by, by, by the person, by the parties requesting the the starting application, but, you know, I I hear what you guys are saying about about this itself, so. Okay, so any other comments, anybody else? No, all right. So this is, we have a recommendation then that the committee, you know, if I say this, if I I haven't had a mover yet. I don't get the feeling I'm going to get the motion to I don't think it's going to pass. Do I, what do I do anyway? Do it anyways? And because I know if we do that, we can't, we have to wait a year before further discussion. Is that not right?
So if you read the recommendation, as soon as you read it, it's put on the table.
Yeah.
And then it's open to amendments. If that's what you wish to do is then the recommendation. Otherwise, another member of council is more than ready to put forth alternate.
Yeah, yeah, it's not on the table until it's moved in second. So we haven't read the recommendation all along. Yeah. Still needs a mover in a second. Right, and and I suppose, and if we have, if we do read it, we get a mover in a second, or.
Just ask for a mover.
Yeah, yeah, sure. No, I just, Jake, because if we wanted this discussion in six months, we'd wait a year before we have the discussion again, and we have this. Oh, yeah, okay, that's fine, that's fine. So, okay, so the recommendation on the table is then is that committee endorse the modernization of our notice to the public with respect to planning matters, which will generally include mailing notices and publishing on the township's website as required to meet or exceed regulations made by the planning.
I would happily move that.
Okay, a mover. Now, do I have a second here?
I got a second, and so we can have a discussion. Okay, they're going to pass or fail. So to staff, so that I understand what exactly that means. So so by publishing a notice in the newspaper with sufficient general circulation to get a public reasonable notice of meeting, is the intent to eliminate newspaper?
Yeah, yeah, so that option is now available to us to eliminate newspaper. So the rest of the rules was to not publish in the newspaper, but to publish on the township's website. That means planning acts, that means planning activities. And then we would also continue to mail out to residents within a hundred and twenty meters. We also have the option of posting a sign on the property. This is what we do for my very own applications. So that option will which is as well, if you want to see some costs, but still have some more notice requirements. But I'm happy I asked the planning.
Any other questions?
So, so just so that I've got this straight in my head. So currently, do we do the hundred and twenty meters? Yes, right? Yes. Currently, we do everything else that you've said you're going to do. We're going to continue to do website. You're going to do all that. Really, ultimately, what we're, the only thing we're changing is taking away the newspaper?
For the chair, if we're going to meet the regulation by posting on the website, we would probably post it in a clearer spot on the website, not just in the council calendar. I would post, oh, like the news and notice pages on the front page, make it easier to find. But essentially, yes, we're doing the same, but not in the, not.
So so my interpretation of three isn't that you would eliminate it. It's, I think those newspapers exist. Think people buy the, I know we don't advertise in the leader, but I mean, people that are from Cardinal shop in Iroquois by the leader all the time. Lots of people buy the subcribble one. Everybody gets the, we continue to do the other. So, so to me, those newspapers do exist, right?
The South Grandville Beacon is published every other two weeks. Even right now, it's published in the Recorder in Times, which is like the official, I said, we were posted. We have to send a notice a week in advance, and we always publish it on Thursday. So it can have like a week, week and a half to the timelines, because we have to give twenty days notice before we hold the meeting. So now add a week and a half, or a week or week and a half to that, where we can even start advertising it, and then we could twenty days. So it adds some time. If we were to advertise in the South Grandville Beacon, then we might get even more time depending on their publishing schedule. I would know that when it's a township wide amendment, we publish officially in the Recorder in Times, but we also add a secondary post in the South Grandville Beacon, just to make sure that the it might not actually need the time for recommendations, because we've met that, with the time requirements, because we've met that.
So, so does do we know how many of the twenty-four point four percent of the people that are sixty-five and over have access to, or made better yet, a hundred percent of our population have access to computer and internet and other means to see it, like just struggle, I think. Yeah, okay, I know how, boy, it's okay.
No, is, is, is there a compromise possibility here where the newspaper doesn't have to necessarily have the twenty days because we've notified it on our website and and others?
The chair, I suppose if we're meeting the notice requirements through our website and the newspaper was an additional form of sharing, then why suppose that would, it may not be twenty days?
All right, so any other comments?
I just, one, to the chair, to Wendy, how many times has that happened where we didn't get in between? You know, we want to put it in the paper, that twenty days, instead of putting it off for another week. Has it happened a lot, or?
Like every time, because we have to give at least a week's notice. So we're ready, we got the notice and we're ready to share it. As soon as we can get it in, we give it to them on Thursday, and it's published the following Thursday. So we've already lost a week there, and then you start your twenty days.
Start to twenty days when it's in the paper.
When it's published.
So we had someone in here today give it to us, the third, you're going to give it to them the fifth. It doesn't start till the twelfth. Is that right?
Yeah.
Twenty days. Is it going to be that much?
I think we're doing it.
Yeah.
I'm not a legal, and I'm not a legal guy, and I get that the interpreter, and I get that you're trying to speed things up. I know that you're trying to support us because we want to push and push and push and push to do things faster, but there are, there are local print newspapers available. I mean, I would argue that there's three.
We should have the actual wording in here that that are suitable to provide the provide notice to, I can, I can look up the wording, but I reviewed it with our clerk, and we felt that it was, you can vote, so you would say, that's what.
Okay. All right, so any other comments before I call?
It's just, you know, coming through the chair, coming from the newspaper background. There is a reason why the regulations have changed, and we don't have to use a newspaper anymore. And there's a reason why the recorder in times is like two pages six. Newspapers are going, have we can hang on to the straws and enjoy them as long as we want, but we can't change the facts. The world doesn't communicate through newspaper anymore.
All right, any other comments? All right, I'll let to a vote then, so all in favor? And I can't, I'm not going to vote because with what you hear, I don't want to have a stand in that situation. So I won't, what I think is what I'll do for that situation. So tie, it doesn't, whatever, tie, the tie still has anyways. Okay, all in favor?
In favor of dropping the newspaper, the recommendations?
All in favor of the recommendation, yes, sorry about that.
Oh, would be me.
Would be you? All opposed? Onto six B, which is streamlining severance recommendations. And this is also with you, Wendy, the CDC.
Through the chair. So the county's been exploring ways to streamline severance process. And we've worked on the county's council, the program has been changed to no longer require public hearings for most applications, even at the staff level. The counties ask for support in three months, have a stream of process by ensuring comments are sent to them within thirty to forty-five days of the application circulation. So our township regularly meets this timeline with our regular process. We're pretty quick to to bring things forward to the committee and have recognition for it. But there are some circumstances where our process could result in delays. So when an application circulated to the township, staff prepare, prepare a report for the next committee meeting. Committee makes a recommendation to council, which is three weeks later. So the council makes a formal recommendation to the counties. Staff will order council's recommendation to the counties by completing a standard questionnaire, and we attach the signed resolution. So most municipalities follow the same process. We sometimes face challenges with our process when an application is received near the beginning of the month, but it's too late to get onto the very next community development agenda. So staff would need to wait until the next month for committee to review the application, then another three weeks for committee's recommendation to be reviewed by council. So we're past the forty-five day mark, something that seems really time sensitive or urgent. We would put it on the admitted operations agenda. We're always looking for ways to not cause hardship or unnecessary delays to the applicant. And so staff do have delegated authority by council, which council resolutions, make routine to comment directly to the counties on technical severance applications. This is when there's, isn't a new lot being created, like a lot line adjustment, or just a created a right of way or or something like that. We're not actually creating lots. Staff will review the application, and we'll make our comments directly to the counties. But for all other severance applications, committee could request that council delegate authority to this committee, the committee of the whole community development, to comment directly to counties. Or through, through staff, obviously, through the committees. And committee would still have the option to report for more complex applications to council if they choose, or if there's somewhere a time meeting or some follow-up questions asked. So we still have option, but if I just speed up the process by a few weeks, if maybe you can make that a recommendation.
Thank you very much, buddy. All right, Mr. Rare, do you have any comments?
Yeah, so just again, so that I have it right in my head. There's a couple of different options, but but the the idea would be not to put it completely into staff's hands, to put it in CDC's hands to make the recommendation for it. I misinterpreted that earlier, sorry. I, I, I mean, CDC is a meeting of council. The only thing that it really does is, I mean, it gives you that extra two weeks to or three weeks to think it over before it comes to you again at council to push it through. So if you think of something, maybe you didn't originally think of before, it just gives you that extra little bit of time for for thought, but sometimes it's, yeah, right, on a complex one, you can still do that, though. There's nothing that says you can't. So I sometimes I struggle with, you know, getting the package at four o'clock on a Friday, and then having to have the Monday night meeting to, you know, go through every scenario. And a lot of times when we have these conversations, it gives you that extra two or three weeks to, you know, go through it and come back at council. Ninety-nine percent of the time, it doesn't change the way you see it. It just allows you to look at it from different angles. I, I think on the surface, I'm hundred percent supportive. I mean, it seems to speed things up. It's meeting with council anyway. And if we believe it's, you know, controversial or needs more oversight, we can put it off to council. So I think for you know, and and I think, you know, staff, I mean, staff always puts good reports in front of us. So I mean, as long as we have the necessarily necessary information, I I can't see why I would. Yeah, absolutely. I think I'm strong and support.
Oh, no, I'm strongly, actually, I'm up going script one. More forward in us, the community, the whole of the community, we do our own severance applications, but that's for another day. So.
Small steps.
Yeah, small steps. So, yeah.
Yeah, exactly what he's here to say, for sure.
All right, so the recommendation that committee recommend that council delegate authority to the committee, the whole community development to make comments to the counties on severance applications. I need a mover for that. Somewhere, moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by the figureman, Fred, yeah, it's Mr. Mordell. That's Mordell, so all in favor?
Okay, that will pass until later.
Okay, good. So moving on to six A three, discussion on the Housing Accelerator Fund application, part two. Right, CDC, yeah.
Okay, and so thank you to the chair. An additional four hundred million dollars in funding for the Housing Accelerator Fund was announced in the twenty twenty-four federal budget, resulting in a second application window from July fifteenth to September thirteen. This funding is only available to applicants who, like us, submitted an application last year that was not approved in the first round. So the half program provides funding based on the number of housing units created as a result of those initiatives in your application. The base funding for that is twenty thousand dollars per unit, if you're eligible for, and then bonus funding is also applied to housing units that are considered affordable. That's an additional nineteen thousand dollars if you're creating a stretch affordable housing unit. Or if the housing unit is part of the missing middle category, that could add an extra twelve thousand dollars for you know, missing middle category being like an additional residential unit or a semi-detached, not a single detached dwelling, not a high-rise apartment, low-rise apartment building, sure, missing middle. And so our application needs to include five initiatives to help achieve our housing supply growth target within the program's timeframe, which is three, four years. So although the intent is for the benefits to outlive the Housing Accelerator Fund, like that timeframe new for round two each, sorry, sorry, each initiative must align with at least one of the ten updated Housing Accelerator Fund best practices. You think back to last year, when we did this application, there must have been like thirty different things we could choose from. And we, we actually picked seven, even though we only needed to have five, up there, best before, let's have more initiatives. Our application actually is not scored on those last two. It's nice that we included them, but when they review our application and do scoring for them, we don't get any points for them. So this year, my strategy was to pick five, make them really strong, so that I can get more points for those five initiatives that we choose. We also heard some general feedback, not necessarily directed to our municipality, but for some of those municipalities that weren't successful in applications last year, that they weren't aggressive enough, they weren't setting a high enough targets for them. So it wasn't directed at us or specific to us, but I still take that general feedback to heart. Maybe we need to be a little bit more aggressive on our application. We're very realistic and conservative. Not wanting to oversell or like saying we were going to do more units that we maybe couldn't, we wanted to achieve a goal, I guess. So I've given five initiatives, and I'd like to go forward with, forward with our application this year. I can talk a little bit about them if you would like, Chair, if you want to. Looking for feedback, and then I can refine the application.
If you're going to ask us what we think, I, I'd love to hear your justification. I'd love to hear your justification of the five that you that you picked and why.
Okay, oh, okay.
Well, I just think it makes, it makes sense, right? You're the one who's doing the application. You're the one who's working with the folks that are there. So it helps us, you know, I think we're all on the same page.
The why is heavily based on each initiative has to align with one of the ten best practices. Some of the best practices are completely geared towards larger municipalities, so they don't apply to us. So it's a pretty narrow window, but I guess within that best practice, we can like, like we can cater it to how we want to achieve our goal there.
Right, so what I'd like to do then, Wendy, is let's go talk about Right, so what I'd like to do then, Wendy, is let's go talk about number one, and then we'll have a discussion, we'll just have a discussion, I think it's that, so that's the way we're done. We don't get lost in the weeds on, oh yeah, but why can't you say number one? So let's just do one, and then we'll look for comments and feedback, and then we'll go on to the second one, okay?
Sounds good. Okay, so the first one is financial incentives for affordable housing units and additional residential units. We already know that we want to do an update to our community improvement plan. This would be adding some incentives, financial incentives through a community improvement program for affordable units or for additional dwelling units. So we know that we can and have to do some math with this as we complete the application, but we know that the base funding for an additional housing unit is twenty thousand dollars. If it's affordable, we get an extra nineteen thousand dollars, it's in the same middle, like an A R U, and we get twelve thousand. So we have money based on how many units we're going to do. We can give this money back to the developers who are creating the units, helps them create an affordable unit, because essentially they're losing potential income if they're renting this out, we can maybe top them up with some funding to help supplement that in the future to make.
And just before we get started, I just realized it was one thing that you said earlier. So when we talk about knew that the half wouldn't have gotten before, is that basically like saying for applications we don't already have in hand?
Good chair, so we, we need to determine how many new units are going to be created, even without the Housing Accelerator Fund. Last year, we'll probably do the same this year, we took our average over the past five years, like how many housing units are created each year? Let's plan that for the next three years, that's what, and then, so any housing units that are going to be on top of that, because of these initiatives we're taking on, those are the ones that we get.
So, so any housing development, for instance, that we don't have an application for, technically is it's being talked about, but it's not necessarily something we have already in hand today, right?
Any housing that we aren't already expecting to create without the Housing Accelerator Fund.
Sure, okay. Any comments on number one, then? Nope, no, it's good, okay with that. We like that one, okay, so number two then?
Okay, the chair, the ones, excuse me for not being aggressive here, so this one is I'd like for us to complete a development plan for some municipally owned land. Starting with probably a feasibility study over the land to determine whether or not it's suitable for this type of development. Could be land we already own, it could be lands that we need to purchase to make this happen. So we have suitable land, get the appropriate studies and environmental science assessment, we need the hydrogeology analysis to determine how many lots we can have, and get those, these lots ready to have a development. We can create a criteria, like a surplus land policy or amendment to our surplus land policy, so that we have a criteria on how we are going to dispose of, dispose of, like, give sell-out locosts, these lots donate to not-profit agencies. I'd like to make sure the lots go to agencies or developers that have innovative housing solutions, so that, like, that's a way for them to showcase them, show, like, for us to learn about them. I think we could do a large amount of lots here, yes, I was thinking of that also. And then as, like, as, create that criteria, and as we're going through this process, like, also facilitate the construction of roads and servicing our hydro to these lots, so that we thought development-ready lots for, for these businesses, and I think marketing it as innovative housing solutions that are also going to be affordable, but.
Oh, my heart, so, questions, comments, Mr. Deputy Mayor? Thank you, thank you for hearing us.
Oh, great.
Can we only put two forward, because this one's, these two are perfect.
Yeah, we gotta do five. Excellent job, no, I think that's great, you're right, that's exactly what we have to do. And to see if we can get some small developers in here, like.
Yeah.
Very good, well done there.
Okay, number three. I was gonna say, guess we're telling you have anything else?
No, I can't talk about.
Can't talk that?
Thank you.
Okay, number three then, Wendy, what's going on?
Number three is zoning by law reform. So I, I understand we just, it was keeping amendment to our zoning by law. There were some things, opportunities, you can see that we're outside of the scope of a housing by law amendment, but it was a perfect fit for this application. So things like increasing the maximum lot coverage and maximum building height to allow more flexibility in housing types in our urban settlement area, which is currently already serviced areas, where we could allow more units as a right on a lot. And we talked about this in our previous applications, kind of carrying over, allow residential units in the rear portion of commercial buildings in the main street commercial zone. And so, yeah.
Is this the one with the fourplex by right? This one is, yeah, because I know, yeah, I know, I wanted that. I, I wanted that one like a long time ago, for fourplex by right. A question for the, the lot, probably going back one, but, but just a, a question, maybe it's the Z D Ls. With, if we have the chunk of municipal land, we can subdivide it however we want, right? Doesn't necessarily, like, if we're doing it for affordable housing, or we're doing it for whatever, we don't necessarily have to do it with the same rules, right? Like, we can go, if it's a, a chunk of rural land that's, that's five acres, we can sever that into as, as few of lots or as many lots as we want. Or do we have to follow our own policy?
Through the chair, I'm not, I'm not certain. I think we have some municipal powers to do that severance without the consent process or without the subdivision process, but I don't know about lot size and policies and does it, I'm sure it has to conform to. I don't know.
Just a question that I had written, and I forgot to ask last, but the last one, is it deputy mayor?
No, I still love my number two, but I, I'm good.
This one's great, you have to have that, this one's, the fourplex by rights, great. Whether we build it or not, it's.
So, so, so on zoning by law reform, and I feel like I'm not necessarily beating a dead horse, but did we also include in this one to investigate the possibility of allowing more severances on lots? Rural lots, I guess, in the case of that, you don't want that there?
Through the chair, it's a, it's a plan.
It's more, we know it's more work, we talked about this, and I think it's something that, I don't think we're entirely done with talking about anyways on council, but.
Half's probably not the right spot, right? Have to do, do putting our best foot forward to get what we have approved. Okay, if you wanna have that discussion, do it a different day.
Yep, sounds good. All right, okay, good, anything else on three, anybody has? Nope, okay, number four.
Four, through the chair, is streamline application and review process. So here, we'd like to investigate some really development coming software to simplify the application process. So imagine if you're an applicant applying for a zoning by law amendment, and you could do that just online and see immediately where your application is, like your Amazon order, I've seen that in a lot of people before, right? You see where it is, like, oh, it's been the county building for a year, now for review, okay, it's been circulated to departments in the township, it's been circulated to agency, that's for the planning, and you can see what's missing in your application, what the comments are, and like what you need to do before, it's very transparent and user-friendly is the intent here. I'd also like the software to help us with those circulation process internally, so to our different departments, give them a space, get notified that here's an application, environmental services or public works, or fire needs to comment upon it. It would be nice if it went to external agencies as well, I don't know how receptive they are to that, or how simple that process would be, but that is the intent behind the streamlined application and process, more modern and easy to.
Good, excellent, so Martell, you got any comments on that?
Just, just a quick question through the chair, so would it just be the applicant that can see where his application is, or could anyone go ahead and see where Rob Smith applies for, right?
Through the chair, that's a good question, I don't know, I, we don't have the software, yes, we haven't investigated all the options yet, but that's something.
Man, I'm, I'm with you, like, you're saying outsider office, like, it'd be nice if Sub Nation could have that software too, right? And who else, whoever else needs to be outside our our township to, to get involved on that, so I'm, I'm with you, if we could have just not our own department put outside to go on with that.
Sure, well, it just feels like a culmination of everything we've been talking about for the last two or three years. I think it's, it's, it's fantastic, I, I mean, in my mind all along that we, we were going to get to modernizing permit process and approval processes, like, that, that there was an online one, I actually thought that that was, that we were moving along and ahead with that all already, so getting, getting that, yeah, hundred percent.
Um, just, so you, I think you've investigated some of these opportunities, some of these options out there, maybe like, are they, or maybe haven't, I don't know. Trying to figure out, like, does this cover all kinds of development, or is it like specific to individual residential housing kind of it?
Through the chair, the intent would be rich applied to all kinds of developments, so my application and I I hope to have conversations with the building department, make sure it works for them.
Plan a subdivision and things like that as well, again, there? They're special, I agree.
Perhaps, through the chair, the, the approval authority for subdivision or consent process is the United Council's decision, so I don't think, we don't receive the applications, we're just circulated on them, so that might be a bit tricky here, but I'm happy to have those conversations.
Okay, good, so, okay, great, number five, last but not least, I think so far it's going well.
Okay, so through the chair, number five is offer pre-reviewed housing designs. So here we can develop and or promote standardized designs and pre-approved building plans for missing middle housing. So this can include the adoption of the federal housing design catalog that's in progress, which I haven't seen, so I'm not gonna say that's what we're going to adopt in like our, our building department, so take a closer look at that when it's ready. But we can also include designs that are commissioned by our township, based on the needs that are, I guess, by, in our housing needs assessment. So we make sure that we've got some pre-approved, pre-reviewed, I should say, designs that are ready, will save the applicant some time and cost of quickly developing a regional residential unit or was in a gut, and hopefully it also saves our building department some time with the review process, if there are any changes to the plans that are already there, then we will move that it's up to them.
All right, Mr. Deputy Mayor, any comments, I'm sorry, no?
Go all the way. Just try to rotate around.
Yeah, I, I just have one, a certified model program, which would include low-rise building types such as multiple system. Where, where would we get that, that information? Like you're saying, to, to design the guidelines, where, where would that be coming from? Would that become, would that become from another source outside?
Through the chair, we were to push our own design, yeah, who would hire an architect?
For all these, like, to, to develop?
The, so the federal government is already working on this, a catalog of about fifty different designs.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen them yet, we could go through that, we could maybe adopt and promote a selection of those or all of them, if we're happy with all of them. And we can also, we'll take a look at our housing needs assessment, learn what is recommended and what's really needed and what did in our municipality. If that's not there in the catalog, that's already made for us, we could have a housing designer create some more ones.
Is C M H C working on that? Our.
The.
The housing design?
The federal government did, I don't remember the name of the ministry.
Okay, so.
But yes, it's already in progress.
So it's not the central margin? It's involved in this?
They may be part of it.
Okay, okay, yeah, very good, good, all for it, thank you.
Yeah, so, so looking at a subdivision like that's already built, like, say, the front part of Meadowlands, where there's really only maybe two, the D O O can correct, but he was in there, but there's like two or three different style of homes in there. So the contractor already has the plans for those homes, is the idea, the suggestion that they'll bring them that style of home forward, they get pre-approval for the entire subdivision before they even start building, and then they start banging out subdivision, or start banging out foundations, or.
Look through the chair, the, the intent here is for someone who wanted to create an additional dwelling unit on their home, and this would save them. Yeah, I mean, or they've got a vacant lot and they would like to build a, a home there, could it be used for a subdivision? Sure, if there's like a, the appropriate house is there and the designers are there, they can do that. These are, I, I, I'd be careful to not use the term pre-approved, because we would still review it, we still need the site plan to make sure that it's at an appropriate spot on the lot and you're meeting the sub, I'm sure you're accepted, but the, I guess the housing design itself could be pre-reviewed, I'm trying to see.
I guess I'm just thinking back to, and we've had this discussion a lot in, in my hopes, like, trying to come up with ways to do it. And I mean, wartime homes, right, like, we all, you know, know what a wartime home is, they were putting in a different foundation every day, and they were building homes on, they're all pre-approved, everything was already pre-drawn, and I struggled to think why we can't get back to that. And when a subdivision like Meadowlands really has, you know, they've got the engineered plan, they continue to use it, the homeowner maybe makes a couple of tweaks because they want a larger bathroom or a smaller closet, like, but ultimately, it's, you know, like, I don't understand why we don't already do most of that, to allow builders that have, that are reputable builders to build, right, like.
Through the chair, I think usually in the case of the subdivision, it's an experienced developer with those, that talent is already on the map. I, I don't know that this initiative is going to benefit those developers as much as it's gonna develop our, benefits someone who maybe doesn't do this on a regular basis and just wants to put additional noise.
You're seeing it that way, I'm seeing it the other, but yeah, 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 that's okay. My brain always goes back to wartime, and why can't we, if we really are serious about doing this, why can't we put a plan of pre-approves that are specific to affordability, not million-dollar homes, but two-hundred-thousand-dollar homes, bang out hundreds of them at a time, right? Like, to me, that's what pre-approval and factory-style housing, like, the Elantra of housing, you know, not a trailer, but, but it actually sounds to me.
Mr. Mordell?
Hearing good things on, you know, from the private side and from the commercial side, I don't see any issue with this plan.
Yeah, so, thank you for that. Yeah, I know, I, I know, this number five is interesting to me as well, like, the idea that you just have something that you can just, you know, hey, I wanna build a house, here's this easy, here's this one here that I like the, like the design of, and, you know, press print, get the plans for it, know where you go, and then put that in your outline. You know, however that works, whether it's our township or, or the, or the federal government that comes up with these designs, you know, that sounds good to me. So on overall then, there is no recommendation here, I will be, let's see one. That I missed it, just for discussion today.
Through the chair, I just wanted, I learned today that council approval is not required as part of a housing accelerator fund application. I'm happy to bring back more detailed action items to the next committee meeting, that would be on, maybe the community board living operations committee on that next, right, on, but the application is due on September thirteenth, so we don't have council approval, I could schedule, we could schedule a council meeting if that's desired by the committee, but I I'm okay to go ahead, and I'm also okay to bring it back on that day, if you'd like to see what he does.
Comments from staff? I'm very confident and comfortable with what I've seen so far from, from staff, knowing that these are five things that they're putting forward, it's, you know, it, it's fantastic. So, okay, I'm, I'm very comfortable.
Yes, Martell, if you.
Go run with it.
Yeah, run it, yeah, you're doing a great job.
I have my blessings.
Bring it back on Tuesday, next Monday, it sounds like.
It's fantastic, perfect.
Okay, good, thank you very much, Wendy. We'll move on to the next one then, which is work in economic development, B one, application for community improvement program funding, six twenty-three County Road, also known as the Rust Belt. So, let's see, we brought this one back, we asked to bring it back for further conversation in our last meeting in June. We'd have no, we'd talk about it really on this one anyway, Wendy, we just have a little conversation here.
I'm, I'm happy to review the, the staff report if you'd like, or if we still remember from June.
Yeah, like, yeah, exactly. Yeah, like, yeah, exactly, and I guess now there's nobody in attendance online, is there anything, like, I don't see anybody there, so, okay. Uh all right, um maybe just to give us a quick little synopsis, I think we've had part of the conversation, but it's a good little refresher if you'd have a question.
Um the owner of the Rustic Spoon made an application, a community group on plan application. Um in May of this year. Um unfortunately, the work was already completed in uh November. Plan, uh they um quite nearly that the um. A financial incentive program application for left piece of bin into the township. Uh prior to connecting any community improvement work, so. It had long past the date of the works being completed by the time we received the application, so um. Stop to not make a recommendation on the. Application, I think aggression in the in the plans says that we um. It's rejected the policy if it doesn't keep the um general.
Uh I don't see how we can possibly. Indoors this, we're now we're breaking our own rules, we can't do it for one person and open up a can of worms to. Everyone else there has done improvements in the past. It doesn't, I don't see how we have an option.
Yeah, I'm I'm uh. I'm a hundred and ten percent the opposite, um. I feel that the, you know, it's a package there, he, I guess what he did, he went. And did the work before. Application going to use, is that right? Is that how that went down?
Yeah.
So. A person who's opening up, a good example, a restaurant, whatever, in that case, a restaurant, running around. Getting his liquor license, uh he didn't even know this existed, actually. This this program until I went to him. Didn't even know that he he was entitled to have. Up to five thousand dollars for renovations. So for him to go come and say, well, we're gonna go through all this and that, just trying to get his liquor license and he's trying to. Or you saw the prices, some of the stuff that he. That he's uh, you know, the repairs he did to it. That was probably the least of his mind, at least on his mind, and I I know what you're saying, uh Mister Martel. We do for when we do for all, but this is a, this is a different circumstances. And this this gentleman ha- has brought happiness to the village of Cardinal, I'll tell you. And happiness uh to our township. And uh I I'm all for of uh. Going back and I'll go out in the limo on that to to receive this five thousand maximum. On this uh particular project. I have no issues at all. I would support it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm mixed, but but I certainly uh. You know, I understand exactly. Where staff's coming from, I I get, it doesn't. Doesn't meet the prescribed prescribed qualifications, and and I understand that, and. Um I think I might have been with the deputy mayor, if I wasn't with him that day, I certainly talked to to uh. To the owner about, you know, the great work that he was doing. Uh in there and and certainly, I told him that if he hadn't applied, that he should. I mean. I think part of that might have been ignorance on my part, but. Had to not started work to be eligible as or or not completed the work, I think um. The owner continues to. To do work even today, as he can afford. Afford to continue to do to do upgrades, it's uh very expensive to do. For what he's doing, he certainly made an impact in the community, certainly. In involved with many community events and. Uh doing a lot of. Good in the township, he's exactly what we want from a from a s- from a small business owner. As one of those small business owners myself, I've. Certainly missed out on some C I P funding as well, and I think it's unfortunate that that sometimes that that happens, so it puts me in a weird. Difficult. Uh spot. And I certainly wanna support our staff and. And I understand they didn't, I understand why they wouldn't have put a recommendation forward with. With this, but I also wanna support our residents and our small businesses as well, and um. I I think. And I don't think it opens a floodgate, I I. I think what it does is it signals that that, you know, when it comes to communication and and the programs that are available, maybe we need to make sure. That we do our our job a little bit, you know, our job, us, um that we communicate uh a little better with. With those folks, so um saying that um. I don't see it being a floodgate, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this.
Um yeah, I mean, I. I I have to say, I side with, you know, I am worried that it does open up a floodgate, and uh. And and I think as as the mayor just attested to, you know, it's a business, there's always gonna be stuff to do, and I just think that. You know, while while you miss this opportunity here, there will be more opportunities of mine, as you do more work to uh. Uh to seek out and see if they qualify and and do that, so. Uh you know, I'm I'm really not in favor of it, um. Uh just because of the precedent it sets, and I and I mean, I'm, we're, you know, we're uh. We're, you know, my family's addicts, we're we're a weekly, a weekly customer there for sure. Uh but and I and I do think there's more opportunity for them to come back for another C I S B or restaurant on the road than. Uh that doesn't break, you know, one of our, I don't know the wrong word, one of our, one of our big tenants in this in the C I P itself, so. Not in favor, there is no action on this at this point in time, I guess, but maybe the action would be. Uh do you wanna see this brought forward to uh to council for discussion? Would that make sense to anybody?
Yeah, there's no recommendation forward, it's just for discussion.
Just can we bring it up and call council?
We're missing a council. That's the conversation, so do you, if you wanna bring it up to uh council, we can put it back on the table for a future council meeting, uh. That was discussion again.
Yeah. Do, so procedurally, where are we? So per procedurally, chair doesn't vote, correct? I mean, the pair only votes in the in the. In the event of a tie. Correct? I don't get the sense of table that it's a tie. It's two, one at the table. So, so if there was a vote right now, it would pass and go to council.
Sure, council's already, it's a community that makes decisions on.
So it wouldn't come back to council for a further discussion, chair only votes then in a tie, so if we. Make a recommendation to approve it here, then it's approved tonight. Back around, I'm looking to staff for now.
Yeah, if your committee decides it would be approved tonight. But what's what's.
Right, I'm just making sure procedurally, we unders- we all, the four at the table, understand where we are, because I think we're lacking that, right? Like, I think we're. I was thinking it was coming back to council, that we weren't making the decision a hundred percent tonight. Um but I wanna make sure if we are making the decision that procedurally. From a chair perspective, chair only votes in the event of a tie, I'm asking the question, not giving instruction, I'm looking for.
That is, it's the chair of the.
Right, okay.
And there's no recommendations that we would have to. Uh maybe. I'm looking at you, Deputy C L. Would we need to bring it up as as a motion? And then vote on it?
So through that, so through the chair. But there there is no staff recommendation, uh so if. Looking to. Recommendation, you need to bring forward a. Recommendation with a mover in the second turn and uh. Discussion and then voter.
And I'm I'm gonna make a re- I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion. So. With with respect. Yeah, with reverence back to to missing a counselor tonight. And in a chair who, in my opinion, should be voting on this. I would, I would move that it be deferred and brought back at council so that I'm in the chair. And that. Full council has the opportunity to vote on it, and in the event of a tie, then I break the tie. Now way full council has the ability to speak and to vote on it, it's not decided by two members of council. I struggle with it not being a majority of of council. That's actually voting on it, so for those reasons, I would move for it for on, until the next council meeting.
So. Do the chair to the assistant, to the to to the assistant C E O, is it? It it's under the C D C to make this decision, not council, is that right?
So I think through the through through the chair, and at any moment or for for motion or for recession, it it. It can be raised to defer that. Uh and uh if you defer that motion. And you don't specify a particular time when that's to be brought up, it's deferred indefinitely, so if you're. You're proceeding with bringing forward a motion with a mover in the second turn and then. Deferring it to to council, that would be the timeline would be voted on.
So I would, I would prefer to. To council, that's me, but I need a second.
I would be happy to second, thank you, it's very fair.
I think it makes the most sense, we're in this together, so we're gonna change something, we're gonna step outside. It's on the table, it's moved in second, I can speak. It's outside of the norm, it's outside of. Policy, we're making, we're doing signaling something that's different, you've spoken. Against it, you've spoken against it, I think it gives the opportunity to hear what the third member or fourth members. Is missing, and if it still ends up as a tie, I've already said how I would vote, so um. Unless I hear something that changes that.
So this will be coming back to council on September twenty-third, is that right?
Thirtieth.
Through the chair, I believe that it's September thirtieth.
There it is, twenty-third, we don't meet then.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth. Okay, so moved in second.
Okay, it's moved in second.
Joe did, yeah.
No other comments?
No, I'm 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 uh, okay, um then they'll call to vote then, so all of their.
Okay, so if we could bring that back for council, sorry.
Okay, all right, good, uh moving on to uh uh number six, C. Play, we don't have anything there, updates or anything, uh so uh. D, uh information, Canal Bank cleanup, Bridge Street update. Uh that is from the director of operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um. Certainly, uh we were anticipating to have more completed uh at at this time, but uh. The reality is there were some competing priorities and uh. This uh cleanup project got pushed back, uh we anticipate over the next uh couple months to have the uh. The pedestal area cleaned up, uh the removal of the rash uh uh vines. Um installing the uh sort of the stone bench uh facing uh eastward and then uh looking to uh. Once again, connect with uh the real world learning with respect to uh advancing. A little bit more specific with the uh. With the swing bridge in some of those areas and uh revitalizing the uh the red grant. And we'll we'll look at submitting in that in that end of it. Sure, there may be some questions from members and I will do my best to uh respond.
Council Martel, I think you deserve to speak to this one first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um. The only concern I have with this, or a concern I have with this, is we seem to be having a bit of mission drift from. You know, when we originally said every year we commit with a plan, we're gonna clean up the undergrowth, we were gonna put. Two or three stations with solar lights and and eating areas or picnicking areas. I I a hundred percent appreciate, nobody is more excited about the South Grumble students being involved in the village than me, but somehow we have hinged them. And the R E D grant to this, and that was not the original intention. I'd I'd like to see us get back to to our original plan, you know, maybe get some pricing options on. Solar lights and and benches, and I love the stone bench idea. Let's all come up with the plan, you know, let's get back to our original plan and say, this is what we're gonna do, this is what we're gonna make the benches, rather than do the piecework, you know, we're gonna throw this bench up. It, the project seems to have really. Went off the road where it's, it started down. So my attention later, I I got the message.
Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Um, I mean, I I can understand where Mr. Martel is coming from, but I can also. You know, in the real. I hate to say it, there. We have so much going on. And uh just not enough time. Excuse me, and to have. Our staff. Well, we just don't have the staff at this time, I do believe, is that right, uh, Mr. Grant? To get this thing rolling.
I think, so I think through the chair, uh the way that the summer. Due to weather and 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 holidays and a few other items, uh and um. To 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 be fair, through each each day, uh through whether it's uh email, text, phone calls, um. What you uh originally planned for the day sometimes gets uh uh sidetracked. Um recognizing um and certainly don't want to. Uh create the impression that uh the school will be uh dictating or 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 the primary. Focus of any work in that area, I think if there's opportunity to leverage some of those um. Skills and and keep it uh in connection with the uh with the original foresight, we would, we we would certainly wanna do that. And I think that if we're able to get um a couple key partners. And and that may be businesses that are um with letters of support or potentially, you know. I think we had originally um contemplated, you know, maybe there was a donating a bench or some. Some something towards that project that we could incorporate into that red grant to see if we can, we we can leverage a little bit more money. Uh that way, but uh certainly not anticipating that it would be um. The school dictating how that 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 project would take shape, but also recognizing that if there's an opportunity there that we can. First, you know, utilize some 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 resources, we'll 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 attempt to do that and try to get this project back on back on track.
I can, I can live with that, I mean, I I understand your frustration, uh Mr. Martel, uh getting this going, but uh. And I'm not personal patience. And and I I can see where you're coming from, but with with the. With the weather and so on, and I'm I'm not seeing with the red, but isn't there heritage grants out there too, we'd be looking at um. Uh really chair the Mr. Grant or or to to Wending? There's some help from staff, so.
We'll hang through 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 the chair, we'll we'll certainly look at uh at at various uh. Grant opportunities that may align with it. Uh comfortable enough in the sense that the uh that the rent rent that is typically annually. Uh there is some pretty good alignment with. If there are others, we'll certainly want to try to pursue that.
I I personally, I I think it's a budget discussion. Where. You know, go where we. I I wholeheartedly agree that it's gotten off the track, I'm part of the reason it got off track, I think, um. Um but I also think when it comes to. Um, but I also think when it comes to the things that we want. To be included regardless of what extra support comes along, I always thought we were gonna move ahead with. With some cleanup, I wasn't sure what it meant. But I always thought we were moving ahead with some cleanup and then. You know, the red, the red grant application and then bringing the school board and, you know, the attempt to bring ingredient on and. And any other community partner that we get to come along, sort of, you know, sort of snowballed it, but what got lost in that was. You know, with the original intent. Sort of was, and if it grew, oh, well, that's great, but let's get, get that. You know, my, going, so, um. I would say I support continual. Movement on it, I'm not sure how big of a project that is, but to me, that ends up being an ask in budget, and let's just make sure that in this year's budget. It has a line item so that it can't get missed. And if we are lucky enough to get red grant to support it, or, or, uh, a community and further community involvement or corporate involvement to, or. We're going to obviously continue with the school, but that way, the intent of the dollars, you know, the, what you're asking for to get done. You know, you have the opportunity to get done, if it gets voted down budget, that gets voted down budget, or if the only support that it gets is if it gets red grant or. Our community support, then so be it, but let's have it as a. As a budget discussion, that way it doesn't get missed, that'd be my. Cause I, I, I always thought we were moving forward, but keeping it clean too, it certainly looked fantastic last year and started to. You know. Get out of control again.
Thank you, uh, I don't have, but anything really to add to that, I mean, I think, you know, um. You know, the, the idea of continually doing something with it, which I think we're talking about is, is, is important and, uh. You know, but of course, uh, you know, that, that coupled with the fact that we're, we're a small community and, uh, you know, can sometimes have. Ups and downs, staffing, whatever challenges, if you will, that, uh, that have delays, but, you know. Uh, I can be patient, unfortunately, I think that's maybe one of my. Good things and flaws at the same time, but, uh, you know, I'd like to see it progressing further as well, and I, you know, sounds good for a conversation about. Uh, where the money comes from, uh, in, in October, whatever time frame, I guess, so. Good, okay, good discussion there, uh, and then, um, anything else anybody has to add before? No, okay, great, moving on to six E, uh, discussion on the communications committee. Uh, in this, um, uh, economic development consultant, I'm very, sorry, just ask Mary.
Through the chair, this, um, is a recommendation or a, uh, discussion item that came up from the June third meeting. Um, it was a notice of motion to request a discussion regarding the formation of a had hoc communications, had hoc communications committee. Um, one of the pillars of our strategic plan is good governance, and this includes the subjective enhanced communication in our community. Um, we have identified, we can, the committee can identify gaps with, um, sorry. Identify to address current gaps and how information is shared with residents. The township needs to disseminate information through channels that can best engage residents. And, uh, the committee would develop comprehensive strategies to enhance communication efforts. There are, uh, five discussion points, I'm not sure if I wanna proceed with those. Um, and the terms of reference were.
Yeah, so, uh, and there is no recommendation here, is there?
Uh, just your welcome feedback, if you would like to. Develop a proposed, uh, communications committee.
Okay, uh, fair enough, so, uh, why don't we see if we just, maybe just give a summary for the discussion, uh? Yeah, let's do a summary for the discussion, and then any points that, uh, any member, uh, one of the committee wants to, let's bring up, we can talk about it, so.
So, um, summary, I would say that the, um, strategic, uh. Plan and the terms of reference are there for review, um, that the council, the committee would include one to two council members, the community development coordinator. Chief administration, chief administrative officer and any pertinent consultants. Uh, we would discuss whether, uh, any resources were required financially, but we would do our best with existing resources. Um, and we would develop, uh, m- metrics to ensure the success and criteria to evaluate the impact.
Mr. Mayor, anything on your end?
Uh, yes, and, and the only thing on my end is, is yes. Um, I, I'm a yes guy tonight, which is kind of unusual for me. Um. We've been talking about communications forever, this ad hoc committee, you know, with public engagement or public involvement, actually. Um, and getting something back in front of us as a council that we can, you know. Uh, substantially move forward makes a ton of sense, um. You know, we hear from the public, you have the knowledge of staff, and you have whoever it is from, from this group that sits on it. You know, with, with the policy portion of it, so. Um, I, I think it's perfect. So, and I look forward to seeing something that was, I think, on every one of our mandates, we heard it from almost every. Single person, we discussed it tonight about newspapers and I just think there are so many things that we can do better, and I think. You know, it's taken two years to get here, and I, and I look forward to seeing the results from it, so.
Yeah, I'm, uh. I have to admit. I'm not an ad hoc. Many person, but. Four years ago, I, we started our office down at the, uh. Down at the Legion Way to redo it and, and, and to. You know, get the payment. Done and so on and so forth and. I had, uh, people want the whole box, I said, no, you don't need to. And I said, yeah, we are, and he took that on and. You know, we still have a lot of the work to do, but it's gonna come with the help of Mr. Martell. And our, our council, so, um, for this, yes, communications. The ad hoc. Get. To me, start yesterday, get it going. Uh, get some, some members who, who like yourself, uh, just ask Mary. And, and, and bring it forward, like. Um. This weekend was great to see, uh, a little spill on our township, uh, happy. Happy, uh, Labor Day, we never had that. Cheapers, that was great, you know, I said, oh my god, that's so nice, so little things like that. Goes a long ways if someone picks it up. I'm still, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm all for it, uh, you have my total support. I don't wanna be on the committee, but you have your total, so, you know. And, uh, and, and bring them forward, uh. The, the information, yeah, I'm all for it, because, uh, we do, we have a communication gap. And it's hard to figure out, you know. Older people know. It's really hard.
Mr. Martell, you brought this forward, so anything else you wanna say that hasn't already been said?
Yeah, I think, uh, just echoing what I'm hearing here, I don't want Steve on me. I'm kidding, that's I don't, there are some incredibly open and. Sharp lines in this room that are very creative. We could be setting the bar for communications easily. Other municipal owners can be looking at us and go, wow, look what they're doing.
Yeah, no, I, and, and, not that it matters, like I said, for tonight, but I'm in favor as well, and I'd like to see what we can do here, uh, you know. There you go, uh, yes.
Um, what we would need then is, uh, direction from the, from the committee to finalize the terms of reference and then. Then bring it back, but with, uh, with, with suggestions.
So, um, then I'll move a recommendation that we move the. The terms of reference as written. And, um, that. Uh, that it goes to council for council support. End of the month, yeah. Okay, so then, so, so, yeah, so the recommendation would be that we, that, that council approve a. Uh, creation of an ad hoc communications committee and that we. Accept these as the terms of reference. That, okay, clear?
I'll second it, seconded by the. Deputy Mayor, it's all your show, Council Martell. What was the question? Fair enough, uh, okay, so any other comments before we, uh, vote, oh, sorry. To be honest, I can very much appreciate that, I had it this time, so I'm gonna go on record and say. So, on that note, we'll, we'll bounce the vote, all in favor. Okay, good, there you go. All right, that's good, and, uh, so then moving on, uh, to number seven, inquiries and notices of motion, does anybody have any increase in notice motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, um, I have one, I'd like to bring forward, uh. Our next meeting. Which would be. Finance.
Oh, you mean next week's meeting, it's the amen?
Uh, we have to have, uh, our, our alcohol policy in the township exempt. Uh. For an outside community event, chance ten on, on September twenty four. Twenty first, twenty twenty four only. It's for their porch party and barbecue. So I'd like to. What we did. Do believe in, carding, we exempt it for one day. Down on the water, till further notice, but we just haven't got further notice. So I would like that brought up if we could.
Like if you, you're good? Good, okay, good.
And two. Not done yet, thank you. Uh, we're supposed to bring up, uh, forward information on tickets and settlement policies, settlement and, and rural policies. And, uh, where is it? I've been, we've been looking at that for. At least three months now.
Chickens and settlement, are you guys, you said?
Yeah. Uh, information on, on, on how some kind of, on, on, I will offer, uh, settlement areas and, and, and rural ball, balls.
So getting through the chair, I do have, uh. I do have some information on that, I'll put together a email and send it to, uh. Into council.
Good, for next week? Thank you. Very much. Mr. C E O, and. Not done yet, I do that. Uh, no, I just wanna, a big shout out for the, uh, this weekend's Labor Day, or no, festival committee, I think. Let the mayor just speak on a little bit more. Uh, great job, uh, great job by the ladies at the Legion for the kitchen and, uh. We had some rain, but everything seemed to work. Okay, and I'd like to, to, uh. Send my, uh. Uh. Send off to the Augusta Township too, for their beautiful parade they had yesterday in, uh, North Augusta, I attended, it was well. Well received and well done, so. It was done. Well, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, you look like you have something?
I, I do, actually, um, uh, last council meeting, um, that was, that was. And maybe I. Missed it or was misunderstood that, um, wanted to have the discussion for the schools. Um. Brought it up last, last meeting, I was hoping that there might be a discussion item on, uh, for tonight, in all fairness, I did not. Uh, so your committee, um, I thought it was, was a community development committee, uh, discussion. I'd like that on the next. Agenda, just, just as a discussion item, I don't really have a whole lot of information other than what I said that. That night, but it needs to be brought up as a discussion item. Certainly. Other. Discussions that. Moving forward, you know, Mayor Shaver's mentioned it on the radio about, you know, Maynard School, uh, shuttering and. Uh, Wellington and, and so Prescott and, and, uh, Augusta. Uh, wanting to build a new school. And I know in the last, you know, this, you need the numbers to build new schools and. Uh. Certainly in no way, shape or form. Um, should those numbers come from the closure of our schools? And so, or at least in my opinion. Everybody else here at the table needs to have that say. Uh, but I wanna make it very clear to, to our residents and to the people choosing Edward'sburg Cardinal as a home. That, that. Their school's in our towns now, we used to have three, we have two. And I want those schools to stay open, so, um, and I certainly don't support the closure of our schools to create a new one in Prescott. So, what they do is up to them, but I don't support that, so as a full discussion item where we can actually have that. As soon as possible, I want that to the school board. Yesterday. So, uh, if it's supported, if it's not, then it's not, but, but I, certainly before we get behind. On this discussion, I know at A M O, that. That, that's what Mayor Shaver was talking about on the radio, was meeting with the education minister and the request to. For funding for a new school. So, I haven't F O I. That information, but. Um. I wanna have that discussion, but, yep.
Okay, uh, and I don't have anything either, so that's, uh, good for inquiries and notice of motion.
No, there is no man, I'm sorry, um, I, I guess, if, if I can. You know, very, very briefly, I promise, um, certainly, you know, it was a, a wet. A very wet, uh, labor fest, uh, this weekend, um, and I believe staff put the ice in at the arena. Mm-hmm, most likely this weekend as well, I'm looking to staff, let's say nodding, but, um, I know it was a busy weekend. All around for staff, there were bleachers that were moved. Uh, there's garbage cans that got emptied, there was a setup that needed to be helped with, there's an arena that, that's getting up. So the kids can play hockey as well, so, uh, to the staff and their involvement in Labor Fest. Um, well done and thank you, as always, please say that to our staff. Um. To, you know. Everyone that volunteers in our township, uh, to make every. Festival. Especially like, you know, Labor Day to celebrate, um. You know, unions and, and the workforce. Um. A success, I, I wanna say thank you to, to everyone that volunteers, not just one or two or, or three people, there are so many people that do. Uh. Hours and hours and hours of work to make every one of those things successful, so to everyone that's involved. Uh, well done and making your township a great place. Thanks for reminding me, I love that stuff.
All right, moving to number eight, question period, do we have, uh, some people in the audience? From the public tonight, so, uh, you guys have any questions at all, tonight's, tonight's?
I, that's not my decision, I think the original plan was supposed to put three on, uh. I said it's back in the.
Are you set, or still?
No.
Let me try to collaborate with Mulder. We can donate three benches.
That the discussion.
Absolutely, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
The second person mentioning today.
Thank you.
Look, we gotta, we gotta, so it's question period, thank, uh, we appreciate the offer, and that's, that sounds like a good thing we're gonna, then we'll follow up on it, free to, after church. Any other questions? All right, uh, going into number nine, then closed session, we do not have one tonight, so then moving on to number ten. Agreement, I will need a mover for a agreement, uh, do I have a mover?
Someone.
A move, any seconders? And all in favor to. All right, all right, thank you very much, everybody, appreciate it, have a great day.